For today, Friday, May 24th, 2013. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which stands my nation and my God, and with all the liberty and justice for all.
Tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite traducción. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired. I don't believe we have public comment, so we will move to our conference agenda. And we have a lot of policies to go over today. So we will begin with Administrative Regulation 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures. And I have...
It'll be Mr. Tangway.
Okay, Ms. ...
Dr. Christensen is away.
We just had one change to this policy, one to actually change on the reporting requirement. Rather than provide the full written report of an investigation on advice of our legal counsel, it was suggested that the district provide a summary of the investigation report in order to decrease the chances of inadvertently releasing confidential information.
Thank you, Mr. Tangway. Board, any comments, changes, edits? Ms. Dr. Fuss?
I had a quick question. What happens, sorry, what happens when, you know, we have two compliance officers listed at the top? What happens if those two people are actually the people that someone's complaining about?
Superintendent designates someone else.
Okay.
Typically, it's a, someone that does not work for the district.
I have a question. So where it says Assistant Superintendent of Education, is that understood to be Mr. Handel and Dr. Drotti?
Yes.
In number five, it says the district's decision shall be in writing and sent to the complainant. But do I see that the change we're making says that only a summary will be sent to the complainant in step five?
That's correct.
When can the complainant actually get, if they want to appeal it, when can they see the entire set of rationale? And who's going to write the summary?
Typically, it's either written by one of the assistant superintendents who are doing the investigation, or it could be written by an outside investigator if we've chosen to go that route.
Have we done summaries in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
So there's no typically that has been done in the past?
But the report has typically been done by them.
Right. But there seems to be, in the actual report, a lot of information the complainant might want to see if they're going to appeal it to either the board or to the CDE. Would they ever be able to see the entire report, even if they're appealing it to CDE?
It depends, that's the classic, it depends on what's in the entire report. I mean, on advice of counsel, we would or would not release all or part of it.
Okay.
I have a little just grammar edit. On page two of four, top line, it says, "An unlawful discrimination complaint must be filed," maybe "no later" as opposed to "not later." All right, any other comments, edits? No? So do we have, this is conference, so that's it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right.
Can it come back on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now we go to first readings of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 3,000 series, which is business and non-instructional operations. And we have a few, I think, of those.
We do, and Ms. Chitay is away, so we have Mr. Tedeschi here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You'll see, there's a number of policies that are with proposed changes here, and a very concise summary of those changes precedes in the packet all of the individual policy items. So I don't, I don't know if there's any specific ones that you would like me to address, or is the summary that you have sufficient for you to kind of review with any questions? I'd be happy to go through them individually if you want. I don't know that that's really entirely necessary unless you want me to.
Board, I have a few.
I have a few to bring up too, but maybe we should just go through.
Go in order?
Yeah.
All right, so the first one I have is 1312.3, and that's the uniform complaint, I'm sorry, we just did that. 3110, which is transfer of funds, and that's a BP. I have a general question. So there were places where, throughout all of these policies, where it said something along the lines of this should or could reflect what the school district practice. How are we to interpret that? Are we to believe that whatever we're seeing, and I'm going to look at all of you because I think it was all throughout, is already the practice? Or do we, the board, then have to modify it to, for it to become the practice?
I believe it is already the practice.
All right.
Subject to your modifications.
Okay. Mr. Heron?
Comparing this new wording to what we just did, I think the last meeting...
Comparing this new wording to what we just, we just had a public meeting on this tier three.
That is correct.
This past. What does this change? I know in that, we had all the categories, and then we had how much we were taking into unrestricted, and how much we were keeping in each of these programs. Would this, does this mean there's going to be more detail? In other words, the question about if there's an elimination of a program, it has to be identified? Is that different than what we did this past meeting?
We did not eliminate any programs in, you know, in the past year and going into next year. So that was the new addition. So if we do eliminate any of these programs, it will be brought to your attention separately in the hearing. So that was considered in the item we brought in the last meeting, because no programs were eliminated or added. There were no real changes to that, that list that you receive. But that's the, the change in the policy is to make sure that any additions or deletions are brought to the board's attention specifically.
So if the elimination of some funding ultimately ends a program we're doing, and we know about it, that would be included here?
Correct.
And I have a follow-up question. At the end of page one of three, it talks about, again, the level of detail or discussion that's supposed to occur, and it explicitly talks about desired results, so that we should be having a discussion about desired results with the flexibility. I know that this is all changing, but I don't know that we've had that level of discussion in even at the last meeting.
I think that's not in relationship to just tier three flexibility. I think that's in relationship to all the expenditures that are made.
Right, and well, I guess that because I'm looking at it under the transfer of funds, I didn't know if in the future we would explicitly talk about desired...
That can be part of the discussion. I mean, if the, with a specific program that we haven't swept all of the tier three dollars that we're still spending on those, on those programs, if there is a specific desired outcome, we could discuss that, for sure.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All right.
Could I move this forward to the consent agenda?
I think so.
Okay.
And next, we will go to AR 3260. Or should we do BP first? Sorry. BP first. They're going in alphabetical order for me, so.
I gotcha.
Fees and charges.
Is that in relation to...
Is that in relation to preschool?
Not yet.
Okay.
I don't think so. All right, board, Ms. Parker?
On this one, on the BP 3260, I just had one little stylistic addition, and that is, in the first paragraph, under fees and charges, the last sentence is, "No student shall be required to pay any fees, deposits, or other charges for his or her participation in an educational activity which constitutes an integral fundamental part," and I think stylistically, it should be an integral and fundamental part of the district's educational program, so I've just inserted an "and" there.
Was that on the first page? Sorry.
Yes.
Page one of three. Mr. Heron?
Just as a general question I meant to ask earlier. I'm presuming most of these changes are direct result of, of the CSBA wording.
Ed code and...
And legislation.
And legislation. Legislation and lawsuits.
Can, can you be sure to point out as we go through this, which ones are created by us, not in relationship to those two, those lawsuits, or, but is any, any that we've sat down and, and just sort of made up the words ourselves? It's like the last one with legal counsel, that was definitely pointed out. But as we go through, if there's any others where the group of us, or you, sat down and said, "We'd like to make this change"?
We, yeah. I don't know that we wordsmithed too many of them. Linda, do you have a...
Yeah, most of...
Do you want to come up and speak into the mic?
I'd just like to know as we go through, which ones might have been creative?
Most of these are based on CSBA language. I wasn't there when Meg went through them, so I don't know if she might have changed a few things. I do know that the food sales policy was a lot of our own wording, but the, the other ones, I believe, are mostly CSBAs.
If anything pops out that we created, I'd like to know it.
Okay, I'm not certain if there is.
Okay.
So I can't say for sure.
And if you'll notice, in the packet on the back of each page is the notes from CSBA that were incorporated into the policies.
The board version, I don't know if that's...
Oh, okay.
We can't really...
Got it. Never mind.
All right, any other comments, edits, questions on BP 3260? All right.
Once, I'm going to ask this question after each one. May I move this to the consent agenda for our next meeting?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so now we're going to go to AR 3260. So the administrative regulation. Questions or comments? I have a couple. So page one of, what is it, one of three, on item number four. Do we require student fingerprinting for anything? Or what do we require student fingerprinting for? I'm just curious.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay.
I could guess, but I might be wrong.
It's okay, I was just curious, because I hadn't heard of it, so I, but I know, I see that it says why we have to include that, but I was just curious. For item number six, for personal property of the district fabricated by students, can you give me an example of that?
I believe that would be like an art class project where they assemble, or, you know, build something, or produce something that they would then take home. They can be charged, I believe, for the fees for the actual materials, not to exceed the actual cost of the materials.
And I'm really sure, and we should probably say publicly, that this one has really been vetted through legal counsel about fees, correct?
Absolutely.
Repeatedly.
Repeatedly.
I have another question, sorry. For number one, is the only one, on page one of three, it says, "Insurance for athletic team members with the exception, exemption for financial hardship." So that's the only one that talks about exemption for financial hardship? So am I to believe that that's the only one where an exemption for a financial hardship would apply, and none of the others?
Pursuant to ed code, yes.
Okay.
Well, number three also says it in a different way.
Field trips.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so I think we can...
May I move this to consent?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for each individual one, since you're reviewing each one individually.
All right, so then we will go over to AR 3314, payment for goods and services. Any comments, questions, or edits? Going once, going twice?
Yep.
All right, so then we will move forward.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, to Dr. Cash's question.
Yes.
Great anticipatory there, Mr. Heron.
Okay, now we will go to AR 3420, debt management.
And I believe the only changes to this were in the job titles.
I have a question on page three of four, under negotiated versus competitive sale versus private placement. This, what was it, last month when we had, or I don't remember, it might have been this month, when we had the discussion, the board did actually provide input here, and I, this was like the first time, I think, I've been on the board where the board made a recommendation that the, that that come to us before. Does this cover that? I mean, do we need to put something about the board, or?
No, I think the instructions were very clear.
Okay.
Just in each of the bond issues, we've, we've made the decision to go negotiated, yeah, negotiate it. I mean, we never talked about it.
We never...
But we made that decision. This was the first time we talked about it.
We talked about it. With detail.
And these are all items that are discussed within the business office.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so we will move forward, and we can place that on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Now we are at AR 3511.1, which is integrated waste management.
Do you want to do this?
BP.
Sorry. BP. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we can put that on the consent agenda. Now we will go to AR 3511.1, integrated waste management.
I'm just curious, on number two, where it says, "Any school or site or district facility which generates more than four cubic yards of commercial solid waste shall take or lease one of the following actions." Do we have any schools in that category?
We were very close with one.
And which one is that?
Santa Barbara High School.
And they're taking steps to...
Yeah, one of the great things that happened out of the parent advisory committee was a really good detailed conversation and investigation by our staff and our schools regarding all of our waste management. And so those schools that were having a difficult time were given the opportunity to meet individually with the city of Santa Barbara, the county of Santa Barbara, and Marburg, and develop a plan on how to improve that, so.
I would comment that I had breakfast with one of the Borgatello's, and he was extremely complimentary with, about Meg, and the entire staff, how that whole thing was taken care of, so it was very nice to hear.
That's great to hear. Thanks, I'll, I'll make sure I pass that along to Ms. Chitay.
All right, so hearing none, I think we can put AR 3511.1 on the consent agenda. Now we are moving to AR 3513.1, which is cellular phone reimbursement.
And the significant change here was with the IRS removing cell phones from listed property and considering it a de minimis fringe benefit as far as for reporting and documentation required. If you have a phone, you don't have to get your bill and circle all the business calls. They don't care about the difference anymore. And that was a couple of years ago, and we're finally bringing that into our policy here.
Questions, comments, edits? All right, hearing none, we can place AR 3513.1 on the consent agenda. Moving on to AR 3515.2, disruptions. Comments, edits, questions? All right, hearing none, we can put AR 3515.2 on the consent agenda. AR 3550, food service, child nutrition. Do we have a BP? No, we don't have a BP for that. Any questions, comments, or edits? Wow. We can go ahead and put that on the consent agenda as well. Now we have Board Policy 3553, free and reduced priced meals. Any questions, comments, or edits for that one? Hearing none, we can put that on the consent agenda. We are now at AR 3554, food sales. Ms. Parker?
And Ms. Limon, you may remember.
Yes, I do, and I have this...
I was just like, why is this back?
Yep.
So, on page one of three and on page two of three, these are, as Ms. Steele said, this is the policy that the district has put more language into. This is not CSBA recommended language. There are two paragraphs that repeat, one for elementary, one for the junior high and high school. And it's the one at the end, you can see it on the end of page one of three. However, fundraising activities shall not include candy sales, with the exception of school activities outside of the regular school day, such as athletic and performing arts events. Food items sold after the regular school day or as, or as part of a fundraiser, other than bake sale or store-bought items, must be prepared on the premises under the supervision of a certified food handler. Now, this came to us two years ago, and it actually came up, you know, parents found out about first, I think, at Dos Pueblos, and it was raised as a social justice issue because this would end tamale sale fundraisers. The reality is, it ends all after-school things, like having witties at football games, it ends, you know, PTA being able to sell Domino's pizza at science night. And when we asked at the time why that, this was coming forward, it was that the, our insurance carrier had made recommendations that we add this kind of language in. My personal position at the time was that unless it was going to dramatically raise our costs or cause us to lose our insurance completely, that this was too much of a culture change, and, and it would be really, really difficult on all these groups that operate on our schools after campus, after school hours. And so I wasn't sure if there was something that had happened in particular that this is coming back to us.
Linda, do you have any comment on that?
I don't, I'm unaware of anything either, so I would, I think Ms. Parker very eloquently stated the fundamental issue with the language.
Well, then I would suggest that we strike, I mean, I'm okay with the first line, however, fundraising activities shall not include candy sales, with the exception of school activities outside the regular school day. And I might say, you know, school activities and fundraiser, and fundraisers that occur outside of the regular school day. So I would make that one language change in the first sentence, and then drop the second sentence.
And I would support that.
Yeah, and that would be for both the paragraph that's on page one of three and the repeating paragraph that's on, at the top of page two of three.
And what word? What word did you add?
In the sentence, in the new sentence, it would say, "However, fundraising activities shall not include candy sales, with the exception of school activities and fundraisers outside of the regular school day, such as at athletic and performing arts events."
And the "such as" could be other things in addition, correct?
Yes, because I'm also thinking of...
Science fair, all these things.
Science fair, or you might have after-school gift wrap sales, that, I know that sometimes candy sales are a part of that.
An example was Roosevelt had a casserole exchange, and when this rule came into play, that was no longer a possibility. And that was completely, I mean...
Well, and then, and then the second sentence would be completely gone.
Right.
So that would not even be an issue at all.
That could happen.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I've noted the changes. We'll make the changes.
The only question I have is, as I heard it, as a parent, when this was, this was implemented, it was due to health and safety of the food from the health department. Is that the case, or this was an insurance issue? That's news to me.
Well, I'll say that it was never implemented, first of all. It was never implemented.
Okay.
Because we polled it before it came into play, and this was, I mean, what board members were told at the time was that this came as a recommendation from our insurance carrier.
Well, what's interesting is, unfortunately, it has been partially implemented. I don't know how that happened, but that, at least anecdotally, has been reported to me, that there was inconsistency in, and so it would be really nice to be able to have a very clear direction to give the schools.
It's interesting, because to me, that speaks to, you know, starting the discussion, and then sites not necessarily realizing where the discussion ended.
That's what happened.
You know, it always shocks me when they don't read the board policies that were passed, but...
But when I, when I, two years ago, when I started, this was a seminal issue that was, and I remember reading the current AR and questioning why the people were concerned about that practice, but I was informally informed that, that it remained part of the board's wishes, so, so part, so getting a clear understanding and direction to the school sites will be helpful.
Could we at least have staff look at whether it's a public health concern? Because if it is, we may not have a lot of flexibility in terms of that, and we may necessarily be instituting something we can't necessarily do. So that would be my suggestion, and also have a little bit of clarity in terms of having this brought back in terms of whether it needs to have modification in terms of its language. And I don't know, I mean, based on Ms. Parker's recollection of the past, whether, in their insurance piece, in fact, has played such a significant role that we're seeing here again, or not.
Well, and I just want to say that even if it is a liability or a health concern, that we should find an alternative, because this is not just about the tamale sales. This is about schools that can only generate fundraisers through food sales, and those are poorest schools. And so if it is, I want it, if it is a health or a liability, that's, that's fine. Let's recognize that, but let's have an alternative to how we can still help them, because they can't do the Jogathons that raise $100,000. And so that, I think it is a big social justice. It's not just about one type of food, and the argument was also a very valid argument, then why are we allowing bake sales? Why is, why are bake sales the exception? Because bake sales are all, the product is made at home, and some of them have dairy and so forth. So I would just hope that whatever comes forward to us will be a healthy, safe, legal alternative, but will still allow our schools to be able to do food sales of sorts, which are income generating opportunities for them. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, and I'll just follow up with, again, saying that this is not CSBA language, this is our district's language, and no other districts surrounding us do this, or have any wording like this in, in their policies. So I would be surprised to find out that public health had any issues with it. But, you know, that's one of my concerns with public health, though, is I've found that they will, you know, if you, if you raise a concern, that they get excited about, like, ah, can we come in and regulate something? So that's my only caution, but certainly I'd welcome finding out more.
But wouldn't have, wouldn't that have to be on their books as a requirement? I mean, so we wouldn't even have to necessarily ask somebody specifically, but just check to see what is allowed?
Well, we can look to see what the insurance company did recommend back when that recommendation was made, and we can confirm that and check with them.
And why?
And why?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And then we can do some research in the local health and safety code as well, to make sure we're complying and still able to do what we need to do at the schools.
I think this covers every single elementary school for sure, because every carnival, every, you know, exchange of, like you say, bake sale, I mean, it's, it's there in a large way, yeah.
I would just like to make sure that we're covering ourselves in terms of, but I completely agree with other school board members that we need to find an alternative if we are shaking around, so thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
So how about, if there aren't, if there's no need to make changes other than what's been suggested by board member Parker... than what's been suggested by Board Member Parker, that I would put it on consent. I'll inform you all that we, what the research showed. If there is a change, we'll put it back on for further discussion.
Thank you. All right, so now we go to AR 3554.2, competitive school fun, food beverage sales. And wait, we have a BP for that, so we'll start with the BP, the board policy, then we'll go to the AR.
Sorry?
Oh, this is, we're deleting that.
Yes, these are being removed because they are part of another board policy, 3554.
So, they were incorporated in the discussion, in the, in the AR that we just discussed right now, correct?
Board polit, the BP 3554, for other food sales.
Sorry, Ms. Parker?
But we didn't see BP 3554.
We only saw-
Because I guess you're not making any changes to it, and so it's hard to double check, because one of the questions I had on this one that we're eliminating, and I know it's actually been an issue, is this whole thing with, um, ROP selling food. And, um, I don't know if, uh, we have staff here that are aware of this issue, but I think that it's ed code that the ROP is allowed to have competitive food sales, and so they've, some of the, um, teachers have been-
Donnet Cafe.
Selling things.
Big seller.
So, um, I don't know if that, if that's incorporated in the 3554 that I don't see. I'll, I can, you know, I can certainly look it up, but, um, I, I wasn't sure if that becomes an issue. So, that's just my question mark on these eliminations, particularly ROPPs.
Well, we'll bring that back then with the other policy.
Okay.
Yeah, AR 3554, we'll bring back, right, correct?
Both the BP and the AR.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so then, we are moving on, I think that's it in the 3,000 series.
Correct.
All right, so we are moving on to the 5,000 series, preschool, early childhood education.
That's correct. Good morning, again.
Good mornings.
The, the new language that you see in, uh, BP 5148.3 is all recommended language from CSBA. Um, without going into too much deal, you'll see a lot of the changes that reflect changes in ed code, um, the impact of transitional kindergarten and the bumping up, well, the, the inclusion of, uh, of, uh, younger students coming to school earlier in transitional kindergarten, and clarification of professional development, and family services and, and support. And right now, do you guys have any questions?
Ms. Parker?
I appreciate your saying that this is essentially language is following, um, ed code and, and sample policies, because there are certainly things in here that I don't, that I would normally want to reflect further on.
Right.
You know, there's this one piece where it's talking about if, if your funding is cut, this is how you're going to disenroll students.
That's right.
And to me, you know, it, the, the ed code, it's about sharing resources and equity and making sure each kid gets at least a little bit of preschool.
Right.
Whereas I know that as, if, as a parent, if I had a preschool student, it's like essentially saying, well, take the most attached student, the one that's been there the longest, and boot them out, which you'd never do at, at, at a regular school.
Right.
Um, and so, I thought that that was, um, that's too bad, um, but I, I don't think that we have any choice in that. Um, on the first page of BP 5148.3, I had a couple questions. One is, um, on the first paragraph, it says that, uh, it's, uh, it's going to be in a safe, and the new language is adequately supervised and cognitively rich environment, getting rid of well-supervised. And to me, well-supervised, I, I mean, I don't know if there are implications there that are assuming that you're going to be staffing at a much higher level, but adequately supervised, I just felt like that is not a-
Lowering of the bar.
It really is.
Right.
And I don't, I hope that we wouldn't just be adequate. Uh, well-supervised, even if it means, you know, it's, it's whatever the state ratio says it should be, that, to me, well-supervised puts it better in what we would expect, uh, instead of adequately supervised. Um, and then, uh-
Uh, can I comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that came about directly as a result of a lawsuit.
Because it was about staffing.
Correct.
It was about-
About that, the word well was almost impossible to define legally, but the term adequate is very understandable and easily defined, uh, 'cause when I saw that, I questioned that myself and did a little research.
Mm-hmm.
So, because I saw that, I thought, wow. 'Cause in my mind, well, I agree with you, has a, has a higher standard than adequate. Adequate always kind of means like you're C, but it came about because of the, um, CS, because of that. That's, that's what happened, so. Just, just some background, so.
Mm-hmm. Um, and so, you know, if it's about lawsuits and that's why the CSBA is recommending that language, then I understand. It's just disappointing to me. Um, then I had two questions on the next section, under the collaboration with community programs. Um, one was, the superintendent or designee shall provide information about preschool options in the community to parents and guardians upon request. And, I mean, I assume practice is that you just have the information out there, that you don't wait for somebody to call, correct?
That's correct, and we share, we share this information with our county office.
Okay.
And we share eligibility lists, we share all that information.
Okay. Um, and then, it, it makes it clear in the first paragraph of that section under collaboration with community programs, um, that this is not just about our own preschools. This is about working collaboratively with, collaboratively with, uh, other preschools, private preschools, the county, so on and so forth.
Correct.
But just in that last sentence of that, um, section, I think it'd be helpful, um, just to clarify that. Um, so, where it says, the superintendent or designee shall establish partnerships with feeder preschools to facilitate articulation, I think it would be good to insert the word community with community feeder preschools, to make it clear that it's not just our own feeder preschools that we're talking about, that we're talking about everything that was in that first paragraph. So-
Got it.
The county office of ed, private preschools, et cetera.
We had this week our first district, in the history of our district, preschool meeting with our elementary school principals. We invited all, I don't know, Ms. Hall, how many preschools did we invite? Fifty-five?
Um, I think about forty-five.
Forty-five.
That's fantastic.
It is.
I really would love to hear more about that. I really would. I mean, I knew that there was a preschool lunch, but I was assuming it was with our, it was with our preschool.
No, it wasn't with our preschools.
So, was all of the community's preschools?
Correct.
That's fantastic. We should definitely hear more about that. And a lot of them came, I hope?
There's a-
I think we had twelve or fourteen come.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they loved it. Um, it was, um, a very powerful meeting and a great first start to continued meetings that we will have throughout next year.
Great.
Dr. Bus?
Yeah, I would also, um, agree that it would be great to, to continue and have a little more, um, information as that continues, and I'm sure you're going to want to do more and, and look at articulation, because that's an important piece, especially when we're talking about, um, private head start program, uh, and I think that's an important piece to kind of continue to put in the forefront as we're moving forward. And I know that it's an important piece in our strategic plan, so it'd be great to get, uh, more information on that.
We, uh, created a, a listserv, and, uh, we're, we're sharing resources through that, so.
Any additional questions for BP 5148.3, or comments or edits? All right, hearing none, we will move to the AR.
May I bring that one to the consent agenda?
Yes, Dr. Ash.
Okay.
We will go to AR 5148.3, and this is- Board, any questions or comments? Um, I have a few. Uh, on page one of five, the, where it talks about eligibility, I have to tell you that I read that paragraph multiple times, and I didn't understand it. I was like, so what age is it again? And it sounds like that's what ed code has said we need to put in there, but just, I didn't actually understand. Um, so I really had to think, okay, wait, October one of this year, but then after this year, so just a heads up, um, on that one. And then I do have a general question, because this one starts to talk about fees, and it talks, um, probably a little bit more detail of fees than we were used to seeing, or that I'm used to seeing. Um, is there such a thing as free preschool now in our district?
There is.
Okay. We'll stop there. And then, did you want to add something, Dr. Bus?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna comment that I think that, that eligibility and the dates that they roll over is because of transitional K, right, and, and the law there?
That's correct.
And then for page four of five, where it talks about subsidies, are we talking about full or partial subsidy?
It's my understanding it can be both.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, or edits? All right, hearing none, we can move AR 5148.3, preschool, early childcare, to, uh, or childhood education, to our consent agenda. And I think that does it for our 5,000 series.
It does.
All right, so now we're in the 6,000 series, and we have the high school graduation requirement, and I think that's Dr. Drati.
Yes. Uh, when Board, when Board Policy 6146-1 was revised on June 12th, 2012, the policy did not indicate which students the change applied to. The policy is being revised to clarify the revised requirements only to apply to the graduating class of 2016 and after.
Thank you, Dr. Drati. Any questions, comments?
It was basically a housekeeping.
Right. I did have on number five, um, I noticed that the first sentence talks about, uh, fine arts and the second one about performing arts. Was that done intentionally? Do we want to have some consistency in whether we're talking about fine arts and/or performing arts? Does it not matter?
I didn't, I wasn't here at the inception of, um-
Boy, I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I'm on the committee, and I was like, wait a minute. I, is-
I can find out. I'll talk to the retired committee historian.
Okay.
Doc, Dr. Sowoski, as Mr. Herrn refers to her.
Yeah, I would expect that's just a mistake, because-
I would think so, too.
You know, it's going to be whatever the, the, you see-
A through G.
A through G is, so.
Well, we'll, we'll find that out, and if it needs to be fixed, we'll fix it. And if it, if it, there is some substantive difference, I'll, we'll bring it back and, and share it with you.
All right, and then, technology education as opposed to career technical education? Those are different? So, now, the first sentence talks about technology education, the second one talks about career technical education?
Should be career technical education.
Career technical education, yes.
All right, so, let's make that change.
Okay.
And then, let's add a period at the end of that second sentence. Any others, uh, comments, questions, or edits? All right, so that is, I think, our only 6,000, our only board policy in the 6,000 series. We are moving on to the 7,000 series, and that is AR 7215. That's fundraising for the purpose of augmentating bond and capital funds.
Well, um, this was requested at the last board meeting. Um, the change to the administrative regulation is one sentence. The written proposal shall represent at least 50% of the funds necessary to complete the project. That was put in as a starting point for your discussion.
Board, Ms. Parker?
Well, and I'm not, I mean, this was not my issue at all, and so, I will, uh, I will, I guess I'll ask why in particular, because I can, uh, for this, and, and I'll say I have a larger issue, and it's, I think, really about BP 7215, which we don't have in here, and that is, that I feel that this policy, uh, that the policy piece really needs to be talking about, when is it appropriate to bring in outside fundraising? What, how do we look at equity in school facilities across the district? Um, you know, when is it appropriate that you're going to have a, you know, a, a pool that's double the size at this site as opposed to this site, which has a historic theater that's going to have millions of dollars poured into it, things like that? Um, and so, we, we need to be talking about that and have that laid out, I think, a little bit clearer in the board policy on BP 7215. Um, and, but when I look at this piece, this written proposal shall represent at least 50% of the funds necessary to complete the project. And I guess I could see having some concerns. Um, I, I don't know why, you know, 50% seems like just sort of a, uh, you know, is it always going to be that, that whatever we do, the district's gonna, that, you know, school wants to do this, that no other school district, uh, school in the district has, and so, we're going to pay for half of it? So, that's, you know, one question I have. But then the other piece is, you know, what about if there are situations, like, for example, you know, this happens all the time, if you talk about things like, um, landscaping. So, the district went in, did a whole bunch of work at Santa Barbara High, tore up the grounds, and then paid for new landscapes to go in. It went into Dos Pueblos, did a whole bunch of work, tore up the ground, and left it as a big mud pit. And so, I could see if that, you know, parent group had come forward and said, you know, we really think that the district should have, um, put fun, uh, landscaping in, but we'll help with the fundraising if the district will put that in a pot towards it, but, you know, we'll try to raise, maybe a plan's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars, we'll try to raise 20,000, you know, can we work with the district on this? Is this saying that, that we wouldn't allow that? Um, so, those are the questions that this raised for me.
Mr. Herrn?
I have sort of the same questions on that 50%. Uh, an example would be the gymnasium at Santa Barbara High School. Um, that originally was like a two-part or more process, and they came forward and said, okay, if you move bond funds up in the schedule to do the gymnasium floor, we'll pay, we'll raise funds to go to the next step, phase two, and put in the scoreboard and all that at 30%. Uh, under this, they wouldn't have met this 50% threshold, because they only, in essence, are paying 30% of the changes. Um, so I'm not sure I agree with the 50%, because that, that had twofold. One, it wasn't, it wasn't even on at that point, the bond, but it was moved forward, uh, in priority on the basis that the school would raise, um, part of the funds. Um, and then you have, I, I forget, at Roosevelt, um, the bond money paid for part of the sign that's out in front of Roosevelt, but the parent group, um, raised a substantial amount, but I'm not sure it was 50%. I, I think they paid less than 50%, but I can't remember the details on that. Um, so, I, so I think this 50% addition sort of adds more, a lot more questions to the process than maybe we should have. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think putting an arbitrary number there, um, might not be the best idea. And I guess if, since it is defined as, um, the cost of the project, including design work minus the bond funds, I guess, does this open up to, uh, groups looking at all the needs of the schools, and even though it's not on our priority list, saying, hey, if you will do this item, which isn't a priority, and we raise money for it, is that reason enough to supplant something else we're trying to do that already has been designed as a priority, which I think is perfectly okay, but it, it will cause other problems? It, it's a, this is a, a hard situation to get your hands around. Just as another item, are all these groups that come in and help fundraise, are they 501(c)(3)'s? Was the group that did the San Marcos, um, football field, was that a 501(c)(3), or was that just a group of parents who put up the money and, and did it?
I believe it was a group of parents that went through the San Marcos PTA, but I'm not sure.
Is that a, but, that's, it is, okay. I'm just curious if everybody who comes forward is a 501(c)(3). I don't know.
And I think I understood that being in there, so that no one's making money off, or there's not an entity making money off the fundraising efforts for this. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Bus?
You know, I, I see it as, is, there are some complexities to this, and, but I also look at it in terms of some of these things that have come to us, even since I've been on the board, that are time sensitive, in that you have, um, you have individuals or groups- And that you have, you have individuals or groups of people who would propose to come to a school. They have a vested interest in the school, like they want to see some progress in alumni and want to contribute. And that timeline for some of those proposals that come shortens and it goes away after a period of time because they don't see progress. So I see that as another issue area that we need to somehow another address and, and find out how to best deal with that. Because I think, I mean, I, I look at it as, yeah, there's, there's a lot of equity issues that we have to talk about, but I also look at it in terms of, of time. And we want to, at least in, in my viewpoint, want to encourage people to invest in public education. And some people are willing to step up to the plate and do that. And so I look at it as a time issue, and, and some people lose interest really quickly, so.
Thank you. Ms. Edelson?
To bridge off of what Dr. Poz just mentioned, I think the obvious thing is parents, as they see their children coming into a school, get, you know, it's on their radar. And as time marches on, that, you know, they see, well, will this library be built in time for my grandchildren at this point? You know what I mean? It's, you know, all these projects. So, and I have concern with putting a 50% there because, as Mr. Herron mentioned, I think there needs to be flexibility, but maybe a structure to this so that when we look at a project and say somebody wants to contribute or fund, raise funds for a Phase Two, that's supporting, you know, the, the project and the capital improvement. But, you know, I don't think you want to ever take away from that initiative. So I, I do think this is complex and I think we need a major discussion on it. You know, how, how to go best, how to approach it.
And I'd like to thank you actually for putting the 50% because it's a starting point for our conversation. And I think that this is one of the things that's been coming up. I, part of me thinks that putting, there's going to, I think, need to be something where there would be a conversation for what if someone came in with a 40%? And that's the best that school community could do. So there's going to, and I'm making up, I actually don't know that I have a good justification for any particular percentage. But what I do think it does is it makes it a little bit more clear. And one of the things that I've struggled with is the lack of clarity that there are schools that are brought in 100%, schools that are brought 30%, and everything in between. And that presents its own issue. So I don't know that I'm arguing for 50 or for a specific number, but I do want to, I would like to see something there that doesn't leave us in limbo when, you know, six months before you had X school coming with this percentage, six months later you had Y school coming with a different percentage. Because it, it just makes it difficult. And I think that this is a starting point. I don't, you know, I'm even wondering if maybe we have to have a smaller work group, like with two board members with the district to really hash this out in some ways because I don't actually think we know the answers. I think we're speaking out loud, throwing out the questions that we have. But I know, what I do know about this is that I'm pretty convinced we all want the same thing. We want there to be equity in our schools and we don't want to limit the opportunity for the community to support our schools. That I feel like we're on the same page with, but how to do that when it becomes to augmenting fundraisers with bonds or capital funds? I don't actually know that I have the answer to that.
What, what do other districts do? I mean, that would be my first thing to look at, you know, similar...
Well, I can tell you, they, they don't have, they don't have such a highly prescribed process that we have here. Each individual project is brought forward to the board for consideration. So, I mean, this AR is already very, a very prescriptive process on how a fundraising group can get their funds to augment the bond funds. So it's, it's much more open than, than this.
Okay, Dr. Bass and Ms. Parker?
Yeah, and I don't know if, I, I wouldn't necessarily be that comfortable in getting even more prescriptive in terms of this and making it that much more complex because I have seen school districts that have gone that route. Malibu, Santa Monica, that ended up doing a policy that said, you know, every dollar raised, 60% stays with the school, 30%, goes to the rest of the school district and is distributed in some kind of fashion. Well, that ended up causing a division between Malibu and Santa Monica's communities within that school district. And I don't want to get to that place in time where I see like we're, we're placing sort of one community versus another community. We may be already doing that, and so I'm not saying we're not. So I want to find a, a happy medium for all this because it is, it is a complex issue. I think you, you summarized it really well. We all want to see equity, but we also don't want to limit opportunities. And for me, that's the number one goal. I want, I want to see some equity, but I, I definitely do not want to see limiting opportunities, especially given the times that we're in right now. We have less money, and when people are stepping up to the plate with these times, I think it's challenging to not see that as an opportunity to improve what we already have and, and capitalize on that and, and actually promote it and welcome it. So I, yeah, I would like to see if we can engage in a larger discussion. And I think the suggestion of having a small work group may work for me.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, I, I agree, the idea of a small group working on this first because it is complex. And rather than having this sentence here, I, I feel like it's more of a discussion about, with each project that comes forward, facilities and the board need to be reflecting on, when is it that this is, you know, if this is a bare bones project that we want to have happen anyway and a fundraising group comes in and says, we'll donate 20% toward it, you know, we are ahead, it's fabulous. But if it's something like, you know, we want to build a library that has fireplaces and wooden shelves and things like that where it's far beyond what the standard would be for the district, then do we really, you know, are, are we pushing then? Are you pushing something forward that is just creating inequity? And so I really feel like that needs to be a facilities analysis, you know, as each, you know, even when San Marcos came forward and they, they did the, the new, the, the new field, you know, then that raises the expectation that that's going to be, that that's the new baseline, essentially. And so it's a, it's a bigger discussion, and, and that's the direction I think we need to go in.
Well, part of that would be, I, I, what I'm hearing from Board Member Parker is the need to have, I know that we created them when I was at Galita Valley, and that, maybe we still have them, but district standards for facilities. I don't know if they've been updated in...
Not for a long time.
Okay, so that's probably a good first step, actually, because I think that, that would help kind of provide an opportunity when you look at every project to measure it against the approved district standard. And you would have the facilities analysis that this is above, below, or at the district standard and... But we, yeah, I mean, that's probably the, the net logical step. Or maybe that is what should be in the Board Policy is language that says, you know, dependent upon whether this is below, at, or above the district standard, you know, a different formula, you know, would be applied for fundraising augmentation, so.
Dr. Bass?
Yeah, that, I mean, I think that's a great suggestion, and then we could look at beyond that. What would that be if this board is comfortable in, in, in looking at fundraising beyond that minimum standard, you know?
How long do you think it's been that, that, has it been in your tenure that that's come before you? No, okay.
When, and I don't even remember this in terms of standards for the secondary schools. I remember there was a, when we were going through initial rounds of cost cutting, probably about 2007, 2008, we were looking at district standards around how many rooms, like specialty rooms, would each elementary school have? So you were allowed to have this room, that room, and that room, and that room. And then, and you know, if you had one extra portable, that was going to be taken away. And it was essentially a cost-cutting measure. And, and so a district standard around what, what elementary schools would have was created. And I don't remember seeing it for secondaries. But that was, that was not about, you know, we expect, you know, this level of standard in the cafeteria or anything like that. It was very bare bones, equivalent spaces.
We had done the latter analysis when I, I believe I might have still been a principal at Galita Valley. So that was more than 2007 years ago. So that's, that's a good next step for us. And it was part of, it, it really is an integral part of the facilities master plan, which we had discussed previously. And maybe that's just something we move up closer in the completion part of getting done is this move toward presenting to the board facilities standards, which would include the standard size of a classroom, the standard setup in a classroom, down to that level of detail, so. So we'll, I, I'm not seeing anyone go, that's a bad idea. So we'll move forward with that for sure, and I think that will really help the development of the, the Board Policy.
All right, so what I'm hearing is we'll move this forward and then we'll continue this particular discussion. At this time, I think, again, thank you, because it's just, it gave us something to talk about. So we needed to start that discussion, but this will come back.
So could we, could the board today decide which two board members would like to work with staff and, on this?
Dr. Bass and...
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, Dr. Bass and Ms. Parker.
All right.
Okay.
We'll get that started.
Great. Thank you. And so this is actually the end of our 7,000 series. I have a question. Did I read BP 1330.1? Just because I did. I don't know why it came up in the things that I was supposed to, that I thought I was approving. But there's nowhere to... The joint use agreement one, am I the only one that read that?
Yeah, that's not on.
Okay, I don't know why it was one of the attachments I thought I downloaded. I don't know.
It's not, is it?
No.
No.
Well, it's not on the agenda. I just, for some reason, I thought I downloaded it with all the others. So I just want to make sure no one else read BP 1330 and didn't think it was on here. All right, it's just me. So now we are done with our conference agenda. We're moving to the consent agenda. We have approval of Board Policies 0420.4, 0420.42, and 0420.3. And those were items that were discussed at the last board meeting.
Correct.
So this is just consent. I will take a motion if there is one.
I move to approve. Second?
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Ms... All right, no additional discussion for this item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes.
I have one general question. I see a lot of adjoining districts use the program, is it GAMMT?
Yes, we do.
No, but they, we do, but we make our own changes. But isn't GAMMT a program where you don't make individual changes yourself? And that they make them on a overall basis?
Oh.
And we just automatically, unless we have something to say about it, we just accept it. It just seems like it's a much easier process than us having to look at every single one. I just wondered if in the past, Mrs. Parker, has that ever been looked at?
Well, we have GAMMT, and that's exactly what Ms. Keaney brings forward to us. It's all these ones that are, that's, GAMMT is the CSBA sample policies. So any, you know, and Ms. Keaney could talk to it directly, but she, she starts there with the sample policies anyway. And maybe you want to explain the, the process.
My question is, I, I thought that some of these districts just carte blanche accept them.
Oh, I, I think, but I also think...
And they never come to us as a...
I think that what you're saying, because what, what happens then is that they go, that whatever a district approves goes onto their own website on GAMMT. So a lot of districts link to GAMMT as opposed to maintaining the, the, the Board Policies on our own server.
That's my question.
And I think that's where he's going instead. And that's a different question.
But that, that's 100% correct. Claremont Unified School District moved to that, yes.
It just seemed like it, it would save an awful lot of time and effort and energy if we accepted, joined that program. I just curious what the costs are and why we don't do it.
We're there, but...
We, we are on, basically, we do get GAMMT. That's how all of this information reaches you. And normally, a board just reviews the Board Policies, not the administrative regulations. But that's the practice that this, you know, our district has done. So it does take more time to go through all of this, just on that alone. But anyway, then we, we do the revisions, we send them up to, Linda generally handles those. I'll bring you up here, too, as well.
I guess I'm not making my question clear. As I understand it, we could subscribe to GAMMT and they would make all the changes, and we don't have to take action on every single one of them. We don't have to interpret them and change them. I don't, is that...
That's possible, but my understanding, and that was one of the questions I asked when I came here, but the reply was, is that this, not, not this board, but the board, likes to change the wording. And so wants to look at each individual one and have a conversation about each individual one. And so then those aren't reflected in the GAMMT changes, they become individual to Santa Barbara Unified. So that's why that has occurred.
Ms. Parker?
But we'd be happy to...
Well, and, and the reality is, is that other districts look at their Board Policies, and sometimes they don't make any changes. I mean, there have been plenty of times that I've really, we've really disagreed with the CSBA sample language, and it's not ed code. And, and I don't think staff can judge when we're going to disagree or when we're not going to correct.
That's correct.
And so I appreciate that being, bringing forward. I guess my question, and maybe it's from a steel, is other districts have it, so you just click on a link, enter a password, you know, public carpentry, whatever, and you pull up, you're connected to GAMMT. They've, they've sent their revisions into GAMMT, and so you can look at carpentry's policies, for example, through the GAMMT website rather than on their own website, maintaining each of the BPs and AR separately. And so I guess my question to you is, is it a time saver to do it that way for us?
I, I don't believe it is because I think the school districts still have to manually look at the policy changes and approve the changes. They don't just tell CSBA to update their policies without the board looking at them or staff looking at them. I think the only difference is that we would then send our final versions to CSBA. They would upload them on their website. Since we already have a website to upload them on, it wouldn't really save time. And I believe it's a lot more expensive for them to provide that service.
Do it that way. Okay, thanks.
I would still like to know the cost and, and the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if there's a way that, I mean, most of the time, we accept their, their verbiage. And so if they put their verbiage on their GAMMT and we get notified of what changes, then we could maybe look at the ones, I mean, it might, I just seem, it might be easier. I'm not sure what the cost is. I'd like to know. I'd like to know what the cost is and...
We can gather that. We can put that information together for you.
Yeah, we'll get it to you in a weekly board letter.
Any additional comments? All right, so with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.